I had a very important.
So there's, there's three that you need to, if you could second three of them?
Four separate.
Yeah, good fun.
That's okay.
Thank you, thank you, much appreciated.
I might roll you for that sweater, I'm cold.
Twenty-five years.
Well, I may roll, I may roll you for it.
Should I go about that?
Oh, thanks. Yeah.
It's cold.
Stop calling, sometimes you just shake your head.
You might start to get tired of it.
Hello? Straight to voice. I'll take it, he's not coming.
Instead of sitting at the end of the.
Straight there, I'm gonna move over.
Joe, is he humming?
Straight to voice.
Yeah, but it's cold.
I want to eat.
She's on her hook.
Did you talk to me?
No, I did not talk to anybody.
He was under the weather, I haven't talked to him.
No, I haven't. I was in the mountain all day.
Did you talk to him, Jared?
He's.
I don't know when it time to get up and run, break his neck.
Christian playing great when he has a cold, Christian when he starts getting cold.
What that's, if the change of temperature.
Good evening, like to call this evening's meeting to order a regular city council meeting December 1st at 5:00 PM. Roll call.
Mr. Billy?
Here. Justice.
Mr. Basaki?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Here.
Mr. Shuhon?
Mayor Gerke?
Here. All rest of the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the 2040s, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, I've got a call from Shu on my phone, he's running a couple minutes late, he is on his way to Durham.
Very good, thank you. Comments on agenda items only? There is none. Monthly report of the treasure, did everyone receive one? Before we get started, have a few things to say. Again, rules for public comment, all the rules are on the doors to city, to the council chambers, three minutes for your comments. Understand everyone's passionate, or you wouldn't be here this evening. Again, one person talking at a time, everyone have a chance to talk, be respectful of everyone. If you speak out of order, I will ask you to refrain until it's time, until it's your time to speak. Second time, we'll ask you to excuse yourself. Plan on having an orderly meeting with your cooperation, thank you. Couple of things going on in the city that I'd like to bring to light, we had a really nice event last Friday night, Christmas in the Square, had a parade, numerous activities, a lot of crafts, and people really had a good time, we had a really good attendance. I had people tell me that it was a thousand people, and even someone told me they thought fifteen hundred people, whatever the amount was, the city was filled, and seemed like everyone had a really nice time. Next Saturday, December 10th, there's, there's going to be, to be another event at Story Square, so we expect everyone to come back out and have another nice evening. I want to thank Lauren Mahoney Yeoman, Kendall Sisler, Joe Newbauer, Matt George, Nicole Hindbaugh, for all their hard work in putting the events together, it wouldn't have happened without them. And a special thanks for WNBS for doing a remote on Friday night, that was really neat too, they did a really good job, and got a lot of good feedback from them. Bailey Park, I like talking about Bailey Park, even though it is winter, we're looking forward to the springtime coming. A real special thanks to Joe Walkus, he just gives, gives of himself, and just does everything beyond, beyond expectation. Again, many improvements there, the parking lot has been redone, trees have been removed, new fencing has been put up. One thing that happened this week was, was really nice, I was driving down Carnesville Street, noticed that the, the lights were on, it was in the middle of the day, so I stopped by, and Mark John, myself, and Joe Walkus went down, I believe it was Monday night, just to turn the lights on, and it's, it's ready for baseball, so Union Town Baseball will be ready to play their games under the, under the lights, and we expect other people to come and bring some events there also. There's more things to come at Bailey Park, so we'll, we'll keep you up to date on that. That's about all I have to say this evening, and that's all I have.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to receive the report of the treasure for the month of November 2022, be in the same as hereby in filed. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to accept the minutes of the November 3rd, 2022, regular council meeting, and the November 17th, 2022, special council meeting, be in the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to accept the minutes of the November 3rd, 2022, regular council meeting, and the November 17th, 2022, special council meeting, be in the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to accept the minutes of the November 3rd, 2022, regular council meeting, and the November 17th, 2022, special council meeting, be in the same as hereby accepted and filed. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, Council hereby directs, excuse me, the Director of Accounts and Finance, to make payment of the following invoices for services rendered or products procured for the City of Union Town for November 2022 invoices, in the general fund, $39,839.23, sewer fund, $120,179.05, recreation, $158.61, highway, $684.89, recycling, $31.79, off street, $12,265.63. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the purchase of medical supplies, breaching equipment, and other related supplies and equipment for the police department, for a cost of up to $6,596.64. The funding for this purchase is from proceeds from a Police Department of Justice grant. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the purchase of medical supplies, breaching equipment, and other related supplies and equipment for the police department, for a cost of up to $6,596.64. The funding for this purchase is from proceeds from a Police Department of Justice grant. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Do you want me to wait?
Please.
Apologize everybody for being late. We had to work at overnights this week, and I kind of slipped in.
Understandable.
I apologize.
Good to see you, Joe.
First meeting, I was late.
Not that late. Joe, we're on resolution number... 335. The plow, plow blades.
Okay.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the purchase of plow blades for use in the street department from Stevenson Equipment, in the amount of $3,627.70. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize the purchase of plow blades for use in the street department from Stevenson Equipment, in the amount of $3,627.70. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Just want to let everyone know that these plow blades are just regular usable maintenance we need, it's just they wear down, when you're plowing the streets, there's just no way around it. We, we need to replace them, they're pretty bad, so we need them for this upcoming year, so yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
The next resolution is for a bid for gasoline and fuel for city vehicles for 2023, we received one bid.
So Center Independent Energy LP. For unleaded, unleaded gas, it is a dollar forty-nine, or, I'm sorry, it's a point one four nine, above operating cost. For diesel fuel, it is the same, it's point one four nine, over the average operating cost.
Is that who we have now? Center Independent Oil?
If we don't have any extras, I'll pass them on.
The requirements that we have as far as getting through the courts, names on the courts, you want to track them up, and a price for them. In a year, January 1st, maybe we do have one more meeting? September 15th, we have a meeting on 15th. We have a meeting January 1st, 3rd.
I'd like to put this back out a bit, and I'd like to make a motion to table this resolution to accept the fuel bids, give enough time to put the bid back out, and give more opportunity to try to get more providers to second that.
This is the vote to table, the fuel bid, Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes. I beat the bill then.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town that Fayette EMS be appointed by the City of Union Town to be the 911 ambulance provider for the City of Union Town from January 1, 2023, through December 31, 2023, at a monthly rent to the city of $500. Mr. Winfrey?
Hey, before we vote on that, I just want to reiterate that this is a big cost for them. It used to be, we used to let them, we used to charge them a thousand dollars a month, and last year I made a motion to reduce it to five hundred dollars a month, so they're saving six thousand dollars a year with that, so I just wanted to reiterate that with everyone, so. Go ahead, Kim, sorry.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, whereas the City of Union Town sponsors the City of Union Town Fireman's Pension Plan, and whereas the plan allows for the city to annually waive or reduce the required employee contribution, whereas based upon the computation of the plan actuary, the city now desires to waive their required member contribution for calendar year 2023 only. Now therefore be it resolved this first day of December 2022, that the city waives the member contributions to the Fireman's Pension Plan for calendar year 2023 only, and further be it resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be held in the Fireman's Pension Plan's permanent records so as to document the action of the city. Whereas the City of Union Town sponsors the City of Union Town Pension Plan, and whereas said police plan is set at 5% contribution rate until subject to future change. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize DeMarcus, Bistro, and Cantina to apply for a special occasion permit with the Pennsylvania State Police Bureau of Liquor Control for December 10th, 2022, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize DeMarcus, Bistro, and Cantina to apply for a special occasion permit with the Pennsylvania State Police Bureau of Liquor Control for December 10th, 2022, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to acknowledge, approve, and ratify the decision and adjudication of the City of Union Town Planning Commission without further reconsideration, which decision is incorporated herein by reference, to grant approval for subdivision and final land development plan approval for City Mission Livingstone, Inc. Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to introduce Bill Number 1765, Proposed Ordinance Number 1745, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Union Town, Pennsylvania, approving the vacation of a portion of Crow Avenue located in the City of Union Town, County of Fayette, and to direct the city clerk to advertise appropriate notice of intention to adopt said proposed ordinance at the regular meeting of City Council on January 5th, 2023. A full and complete copy of the text of said ordinance Number 1745 is available for public inspection in the office of the city clerk. Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town to authorize payment of $137,593.62 from the Highway Fund to costful construction for completion of the 2022 paving project. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Union Town, Fayette County hereby request a PA Small Water and Sewer Program grant of $425,000 from the Commonwealth Financing Authority to be used for sewer line replacement of Persian Court and relining of Main Street, Fayette Street sewage line. Be it further resolved that the City of Union Town does hereby designate Thomas Gerke, Mayor, and Kim Marshall, City Clerk, as the officials to execute all documents and agreements between the City of Union Town and the Commonwealth Financing Authority to facilitate and assist in obtaining the requested grant. Mr. Basaki?
It's no surprise, everyone, our sewage system is so old and antiquated, we're trying to get just any kind of maintenance, and this, this grant would be huge for us, we could really use this, so yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mayor Gerke?
Yes.
All ahead.
Thank you. Monthly reports, Fire Department Chief, Chief Call.
Just a couple of things here, real quick, report on our activities for the month of November, we had the following incidents, six fire-related incidents, which included two building fires, three trash fires, and one rupture of a gas pipe. We had 24 rescue-related incidents, with 23 of those being motor vehicle collisions, one pedestrian struck by a vehicle, three extracations of an ill or injured person from a building. Non-hazardous condition incidents, these included one natural gas leak, two flammable liquid spills, one carbon monoxide incident, and four electrical emergencies. 24 service-related incidents, including five general public service calls, one assist to police or other governmental agency call, one person in distress, one water leak, one ring removal, one cover assignment for another fire company, and 14 lockouts or gain access. We had one smoke scare, no active fire or ignition found upon arrival. We had 15 fire alarm activations, and we witnessed four fire drills in a public facility, and as always, that includes facility staff training, pre-incident planning, and building familiarization for our staff and personnel. Also, as far as our training, always report every month on that, another good month, we had 96 man-hours of training this month, for the department either taken or conducted, so that's pretty good. Also, like to report on any unique or special trainings that our department takes, myself and Assistant Chief Smithberger had the pleasure of attending the Pennsylvania State Fire Academy's Instructors Conference, one of the workshops that we took was on community risk reduction, we received a lot of information that we can use both for our public fire education efforts, and as well as training our own personnel, as far as our target and fire hazard areas, and areas that we have higher fire risk, and handle, and how to handle things with that, and it's only going to make us a more effective and efficient department, try to say that 10 times, okay, so a little tongue tied, I'm sorry. Apparatus updates, we're caught up on all of our PA vehicle inspections and our yearly maintenance for the year, so that's good news, bad news is, is next month's January, so, and the cycle begins, and the cycle begins, so, but yeah, we, we got the last one done and taken care of. As far as just miscellaneous items, the Toys for Tots drive is going quite well, and we will be continuing up to the 15th on that, if anybody would like to donate, please stop by the Central Fire Station, while Hillary's not present, I'd like to give her an extra special thing, she's been very instrumental in all that, so, but, as have all of our personnel, so it's a real nice community effort. Speaking of community efforts, we participated in the Light Up Night in the Parade last week, called Santa and the Mayor, we stashed the reindeer down in the apparatus bay, so nobody could see them, and, boy, they eat a lot, so we're going to need an increase on our budget, guys, so, just kidding, of course, so, I'd like to give a big kudos and big shout out to the DBDA and all the folks with the downtown businesses in the city, I think it was a great event, probably one of the nicest we've had, and as the mayor said, it was very well attended, so, you know, there again, I'd like to give them a big shout out, too. Just a couple PSAs real quick, reminder, cold weather season's upon us, so be careful when you're using any supplemental heat in your home or your business, be sure to give them at least three feet of space, give them enough space so that there's not radiant heat, you know, impinging on any combustibles or anything like that. Question for everyone, did everyone change their batteries in their smoke detector in November? That's the big campaign, it's when you change your clock, change your batteries, they say there's, we're not supposed to have daylight savings time next year, so we'll have to figure something out, I guess, so, but anyway, so yeah, just something to kind of keep in mind, and then lastly, everyone knows what tonight is, right?
Bingo.
Bingo, all right, 6:45 at social, and I think that's all I have, anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
All right.
Police Department, Chief DeWitt?
Mayor, Council, hello again, the grant, just so you guys are aware, that we're going to be spending on equipment, so currently the way we set our cars up is we have medical bags in the back of our cars, in the unfortunate event that we have a gunshot victim, or an officer gets, a victim of a gunshot, or some type of catastrophic injury, even that for a civilian or someone anywhere within the city. The current setup, what I'd like to do is do individual bags for officers, so we have the easier, it's easier for us to maintain the style of equipment we have in that bag, and every officer has readily capable, and able for them to retrieve it, or an additional officer or trooper would have the ability to recognize that bag and retrieve it, and to save someone's life. There'll be some other additional equipment we put in those bags, and breaching equipment is my hope to add to the back of our cars, so we have the ability to make entries, and we're not calling the Fire Department out for some of the mundane stuff, we'll have the ability to have the tools to make access. Before I get into report, the event downtown was one of the best events I think I've seen in a very long time in the city, our department had a great time interacting with the community in a public, and quite personal, it was, it was nice, I've not seen that many people out in downtown in a very, very long time, I think the last time I saw was probably the Italian Festival. It's a great event, I look forward to doing it on 10th, we are collecting food, if you don't want to send, bring it to the event, because I know that it is heavy, you can make a financial donation, that financial donation and non-perishable foods will be donated to St. Vincent de Paul, down on North Mountain Avenue, they have their own food pantry, and they are in dire need this time of the year for supplies. So, into the monthly report. During the month of November, the Union Town Police Department responded to 695 calls for service, breakdown of some of those calls included 23 vehicle accidents, eight assaults, 19 welfare checks, 26 domestics, four assist fire calls, one of which was an arson, five disorderly conducts, 19 emergency medical assists, eight assist other police agencies, nine harassments, three shots fired, 22 alarms, 57 suspicious persons, activities, or vehicles, 22 thefts, six burglaries, seven animal complaints, five overdoses, one of which Narcan was provided by an officer for a lifesaving reversal. Officers made a total of 39 criminal arrests, issued seven non-traffic citations, and 52 traffic citations. Officers also conducted vehicle. Officers also conducted vehicle and foot patrols in city parks, as well as Sheepskin Trail, and we conduct stationary patrols of Persian Court monthly as well. During the month of November, to current code enforcement took 16 complaints, seven which were corrected by the property owner. Mitigation is always our ultimate goal, citations are not, and it will be, that will continue to be my theory when it comes to code enforcement. There are carryover cases, 30 of them. Most of these cases are longer-term issues that require extensive follow-up and mitigation activities. Officer Camperd is directing his attention, obviously, away from high grass, we're out of high grass season, like I mentioned, at the last meeting, and he is now going to be focusing his attention towards unsafe structures and properties, to include burnout structures that pose a public safety and wellness hazard. As most of you are aware, we do have a grant, I believe, that's through Redevelopment Authority, where we had Myron Nyipover, he runs code enforcement through multiple municipalities. He's contracted through them for training, as well as with K2. He's going to be with Officer Camperd, and we're going to start tackling these burnout structures, to include commercial properties. So he can get a better understanding of what to do in the future with those, it's very much still a learning curve, so we're going to start hitting those pretty hard. And just finally, on November 14th, officers were dispatched to a shooting that occurred off of Gallatin, North Gallatin Avenue. The victim was shot in the head and was flown to a trauma center for treatment. I'd like to thank my officers for their hard work. Detective Holland and multiple other UPD officers diligently worked over the preceding days to develop a suspect who was subsequently arrested for attempted homicide, and was arrested weeks later after he was found in hiding. We received a tip. He was in West Mifflin, Allegheny County, and kudos to the Allegheny County Sheriff's Office and War Team, who we work with regularly, took him into custody without incident down there. If there's no questions from council, I have nothing else. Thank you all.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Director of Public Works, do we have a report from him?
Yeah, John's not here tonight. Getting the blades for the pile trucks, getting everything ready to go. We got our salt. Everyone's prepared to get out there. We had that snow recently, it came down quick and heavy. Guys were out there, took care, four trucks took care of the entire city in two hours. It melted away pretty quick, but we knew the temperature was going to drop to 20 degrees the next night, or next morning, overnight, so we did salt, and then just completely took away all the salt, or I'm sorry, all the ice that was going to be built up in the road. So we tried to do as early as possible without, you know, jumping the gun, but we're ready to go, and that's about it.
Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Community Development, any report from that department? It's time for public comment. Do we have any public comment this evening? Yes, sir. Take the podium, and state your name and your address, and take the podium, please.
My name is Ray Kastricky. I'm with, my address is 1035 Boyce Road, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, 15241. I'm employed by Center Independent Energy. We had supplied the fuel bid for tonight's meeting, and I just had a question as to, was there a concern as to why it wasn't accepted, or that I could answer tonight?
So I think the concern, just in the initial review of the bid, was it's not a flat amount or a specific amount, so I want to take a look at the bid proposals that were put out to see exactly how that's structured, because from a city's financial standpoint, it really needs to know and have a good sense of what exactly that cost is, so that's why I want to take a close look at that, and that's why I think the council wanted to table that until subsequent meeting.
Okay, if I can answer a question, though, on that, the way it's structured is, it states OPUS price, plus 14, I believe it's 14 and a half cents. OPUS price is OPUS price information, and that's a feed that the Pacific Pride receives, and that's collected, that is rack price, that's collected from all the terminals that we lift product from, so they take an average of that, and that would be the base price, and that's going to change from day to day, because fuel prices change, rack prices change daily, and that 14 and a half cents is essentially what we put on top of that. So we're paying, we're paying the rack price, and the 14 and a half cents is, you know, what we're pulling in for overhead.
Would you be able to put in a range for that OPUS price?
It's, there's no really, no real way to do that, because that price could change throughout the year by a dollar. I mean, you see, when you see the street price, you see how the street price changes, that's a reflection of the rack price. So it's really hard to do that. I mean, we do, we do handle processing the taxes for you, for the city, so we invoice you tax-free from that, and then we file for the taxes for that, for that amount. So that, yeah, the rack price is really what, I mean, it changes based on the market, you know, the fuel market and the oil, how oil is traded, so.
Being that it's tabled, doesn't mean it's a no vote, just on the review.
I was just curious, and the other question I had, then, is, is the next process going to be another sealed bid process?
It would need to be a sealed bid process, yes.
Okay, and then, do you know what date that will be for yet, or will that be posted?
That would be posted, and certainly, if you would request one of those, we'll certainly get one of those to you, but it has just been tabled, so.
I understand, yeah.
Formal sealed bid process, or we just need more time to review this and digest.
Yeah, I was just concerned if there was any questions that I could answer, or if there was any concerns on the facilities at all. We have many facilities in the area, including our stores, so.
The one question, I guess, just glancing at this, and we'll digest this more like it's, the OPUS average cost price that's indicated there, is that a figure that would be publicly available, that the city could be able to find that cost very readily?
Yes, yeah, actually, it's, we could likely send that to you on a daily feed.
Okay, so, but like for right now, if the city wanted to get a sense of what that figure has been, say, for the last three months, for example?
We could provide that to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you know what it is today?
No, I do not.
So our next meeting is on the 15th, so by likelihood that we will re-advertise with more information in the bid spec, and that we will put that bid out for advertisement, and with all, with all anticipation of opening that bid up for the 15th.
Okay.
I have no issues with, with the location. I think the location's great, especially when we get into the, some of our larger pieces of equipment with the Fire Department. So, ratings, you know, you get into competitors, you know, locally, not many, but just to, you know, just to have more clarification for council, you know, and, you know, and also understanding that the, the market rate does fluctuate, so.
Okay, well, if there's anything we can do to help with that process, to provide more information to you, please just let me know. I can leave my number with, with Kim, and she'll have it for you if you need it.
That'll be fine.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? If not, that's all I have.
I just had one media question. Is there any update as far as the investigation into the treasurer's office?
No, no current updates at this time.
Is she still bonded?
Still presently bonded, yes.
Is she actively involved in the stuff, in the negotiation with the budget as well?
So, that's probably a question for other members here. My understanding is that there was a, just with all the department heads, she was provided the opportunity to submit budget requests, and then those were subsequently reviewed to, for inclusion or exclusion in the actual current proposed budget.
Also, is there any kind of like ramifications, like she hasn't attended a meeting for the last six months? Is there any action that you could take, somebody who's actively elected office, that has jumped in public meetings?
So, no, there would not be, there would not be, to attend a public meeting, even as a public official, whether elected or not-elected, there's no ramifications for not attending a public meeting.
Any other public comment this evening? If not, that's all I have.
Be resolved by the City Council of the City of Uniontown, the council adjourned to meet Thursday, December 15, 2022, at 5:00 PM. Mr. Billy?
Yes.
Mr. Basaki?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Shuhon?
Yes.
Mayor Gurke?
Yes. Thank you all for attending.
That's a wrap.
Joe, today your birthday.
Happy birthday.
Joe, happy birthday.